Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 13th meeting of the Bellingham City Council. The Bellingham City Council meets all the requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. I have two announcements. On Monday, December 4th this year, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers, we will be holding a public hearing on an ordinance amending Title VI of the Bellingham Municipal Code by adopting three new chapters prohibiting source-of-income discrimination in residential rental housing, increasing the notice period prior to substantial rent increases, and increasing the notice prior to eviction of residential tenants without cause. Second announcement is the city council's annual reorganizational meeting will take place on Monday, January 8th with discussion at 1:00 PM that day in the mayor's boardroom, and then we'll reconvene here in the evening at 7:00 PM for the swearing-in ceremony for all newly elected or re-elected city council members. Would you please now join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Illaquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
And Terry Borneman is excused.
Is excused. So I would like to make another announcement, which is that in the published packet, we did not include notification of the third and final reading on Agenda Bill 21776, which is the 2018 property tax ordinance. We already passed that at a previous city council meeting, but to take effect, it requires what's called the third and final reading. We'll do that tonight at the end of our meeting. We have one public hearing tonight, which we'll take first, then we'll go into our 15-minute public comment period. The hearing is a public hearing on City Bellingham's 2017-2018 mid-biennial budget modification. Mr. Longman, will you give a presentation?
Yes. I'm Forrest Longman. I'm the Budget Manager in the Finance Department, and I'll be presenting the 2017-2018 proposed mid-biennium budget adjustments. This is going to be a high-level overview, as council has been working on this for about a month. So... We're in the middle of our two-year budget cycle, and when we started this adjustment process, we gave the following guidance to departments with the goal of the process being intended to address errors and emerging needs and to avoid wholesale changes of the budget, encouraging departments to work within their two-year budget allotment. As I said, council's been working on this for about a month. The first presentation to council, the mayor presented the budget on October 9th. There's been a series of work sessions, and we'll be introducing the ordinance on December 4th with the goal of budget adoption on December 11th. Just to take a look at the highest level here, some of the major budget changes. In the general fund, proposing to add a homeless cleanup coordinator, new ladder truck for the fire department along with other safety equipment, funding for the GRACE program, increased library circulation materials, and funding for a downtown partnership retail recruiter. In other funds, there's funding for Cordotta Community Park and Squalicum Pier Planning, two large grants, one for the NOCSAC diversion dam removal, and the other for solar investments on city facilities, also $450,000 to complete the federal building Phase II, and funds to repair the wastewater treatment facility that was damaged in a pipe break earlier this year. On the personnel side, we're proposing to add 3.2 FTEs in park maintenance. That's through reorganization, the aforementioned homeless cleanup coordinator, a body-worn camera technician and police to help them deal with a large amount of data associated with the body-worn camera program, some more custodial support, a building engineer to support building efficiency, more accounting support in Public Works, three new dispatch staff, and a code compliance inspection person in Development Services. All this can be seen in quite a bit more detail at COB.gov/Budget if people would like to dig in a little bit more. So how this affects the budget on a larger scale, we're proposing to add $2.3 million in expenditures to the general fund over the second year of the biennium, and $15.5 million to other funds for a total two-year budget of $589.6 million. And how that translates into our overall fiscal picture, you see expenditures exceeding revenues in the general fund by $6.1 million and $55.5 million in other funds. Prior to this proposed adjustment, the general fund reserve use was $3.7 million and $44.5 million in other funds. To provide a little context to that large $52 million use of reserves, in other funds, capital accounts for the majority of spending in other funds, or at least a very large portion of it, and that can be viewed as essentially saving up money as it comes in until large projects need to be spent, and then spending down the reserves on large projects. Additionally, a lot of that capital carries over from year to year, so at the end of the year, much of the time, the reserve use is smaller than what is budgeted. And to look at the general fund reserves in a little more detail, the anticipated year-end reserves in 2018, if we look here, in 2018, we'd anticipate at the end of this year with these budget changes that there would be $17.26 million in reserves. So you see the bottom here, this is the 12% emergency reserve policy set by council. There's a $1 million environmental reserve, and then that leaves $6.43 million in unrestricted general fund reserves. The 12% emergency reserve would provide about six to seven weeks of operating funds, but overall, our reserve levels are healthy. In other funds, if we had a chart of that, it would show $121 million of reserves anticipated at year-end, but all of that is restricted either by law or policy. So that's the high-level overview of the proposed budget changes. Again, more detail can be seen at COB.gov/Budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Hey, Dan, could you see if someone signed up? We are now going to open up the public hearing on the City Bellingham 2017-2018 mid-biennial budget amendment, or budget modification. There's nobody signed up. However, the public hearing is open. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to the city council on the 2017-2018 budget adjustments? Okay. Seeing none, well, if there's no objection, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the city council. This is for information-only at this point. The actual budget will come forward, you said, at our next meeting?
That's correct.
Any further?
Forrest, quickest slideshow of the day. Thank you, sir.
Jeez, for sure.
Do my best.
Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes that public hearing. We'll now go on to our regularly scheduled 15-minute public comment period. Tonight, there are two people signed up. If you just please come forward to the microphone, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to talk to the city council. We'll have an alarm right over here, a little timer. When it goes off, you actually have 30 seconds left on your three minutes, so that just gives you some warning, and you start wrapping up your comments. Mr. John Humphrey is scheduled to speak first, followed by Chris Diley.
Hello. My name is John Humphrey. I'm an IT expert who loves Bellingham, and thus, I'm working to promote access to public fiber. Today, I present a petition for public fiber that's signed and supported by several hundred pragmatic people in our community. These people make our town work every day. Many are high-level professionals in every field, including information technology. "Settle for nothing now, settle for nothing later." That's a phrase I keep thinking of when it comes to issues facing our city today and how our government often approaches them. We're told a lot of half-truths about broadband access here. We're told that in most locations, people can choose among at least two providers, but the real numbers say it's a false choice. Many connections are very low bandwidth or in areas with poor access. Informational surveys show that the speeds that providers quote us are beyond dubious. On top of that, such spotty, low-bandwidth service isn't even available everywhere. Meanwhile, we've already paid for some public fiber, but with weak excuses, the city won't allow the rest of us any access. That is, our city government already enjoys their own private, high-speed fiber network, a network that could be the backbone for the rest of Bellingham. So this is a no-brainer. I and others have described the reasons for public fiber at the change.org petition site in several articles and many local presentations. First, we're already dominated by transparent, open-source computing. 95% of the world's supercomputers run open-source Linux. Google is an open-source company, net-neutral company as well. For any real IT work, so are Amazon, Microsoft, Netflix, and Apple. In fact, Bellingham has many top-level, open-source IT workers already. Second, open source and net neutrality are based on a philosophy of community interaction and involvement that strengthens every aspect of our society. Yet, some city leaders have opted for providers who by nature are actively against net neutrality, and thus, for the de facto censorship that comes with restricted, unequal broadband access. Being anti-net neutral is clearly undemocratic and downright un-American. Information control becomes thought control. Without net neutrality, providers can and will prioritize any traffic they want, regardless of what's happening on the network, commercial and political ads, news, et cetera. Imagine a doctor using Skype to consult an East Coast specialist. That connection could be throttled back in favor of some big game that will never save anyone's life. On the other hand, a public fiber network would allow for healthy, cost-cutting competition among safe, ethical, local, net-neutral providers, provide better and more secure jobs, increase local self-reliance, provide usable access to lower-income residents, and many other benefits. Public fiber is not only cheap and would pay for itself, it would establish a "dig once" policy to install a cost-effective, multipurpose fiber conduit. Public fiber is the only complete solution that addresses all of these issues. The city council and mayor have been given this information. It's time to support it, especially if you claim to be progressive.
Okay. Thank you, John. Chris Diley is next.
Thank you. Yeah, Chris Diley, homeless here in Bellingham. I am following up on this. I was going to conclude the last time, but I have to respond further about the incident with the unrestrained Dobermans and my being prosecuted by the city of Bellingham when I resorted to self-defense when I was threatened with violence by the individuals. I wanted to bring this up simply because out of desperation, the position I'm in is just completely desperate. I couldn't be more desperate. I'm homeless, and now I'm going to try and represent myself in the case because I felt that everybody is adversarial to me, the police, the public defender, and nobody is helping me. I've got no advocate, I've got nobody to help. I really appreciate Michael Illaquist stating personally, you know, that he didn't see any benefit in the city prosecuting me for the incident. That's all I have, that's the only helpfulness I've received. But I just wanted to point out tonight, I just wanted to, just to be honest and open, that this is really worrisome to me, and the stress of it is actually making... When the police officer said that I'm a mental case, and he said, "Therefore, I didn't have any credibility in this situation," that was, I believe that's false, you know, subjectively speaking. I believe that was false, for him to say that to people and just say, "I've got no credibility." But what's true about it is that I do have some degree of mental illness, which is worsening due to the stress of this situation. And I just wanted to point out, I had a situation in Tucson, Arizona, where I had a case where, it was very clear, I came out as a gay person in the workplace, I was discriminated against. Tucson had an ordinance prohibiting discrimination against gay people in the workplace. I had to utilize that ordinance to try to save my job. Everybody was on my side. They said, "You're right." You know, even people that were anti-gay, they go, "Hey, you know, we think homosexuality is disgusting, but this guy is a good worker. He's being harassed because he's gay, openly gay." So, long story short, I had, everybody felt that I was right, but the city of Tucson ruled against me. And I lost my job, and I was, I'm homeless for the past 16 years. That's got a lot to do with it, I think. I think I've been flagged due to that incident way back then. So I just wanted to say very clear that I've got 100% confidence of my position of acting in self-defense, which should free me from any legal liability of prosecution, but I have zero confidence that the system is going to decide on my behalf, particularly with me representing myself and not knowing how to go up against, you know, prosecution that knows the ins and outs of the system and how to persuade the jury a certain way. So I'm just completely desperate. I'm just asking for anybody's help that might help me, because I'm a homeless person, and it's going to worsen my situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Would anyone else like to come forward? If so, just go ahead and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Jeff Hedgitus, 900 Donovan. I was compelled to come out tonight in this rainy weather on the eve of the groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow for granary and Laurel Street construction, and I just wanted to say congratulations to everybody. This is quite a milestone, only about three years after the sub-area plan was approved. And, you know, I go down there quite a bit, actually, and look around, and right next to that construction that's about to begin is the granary building, Adaptive Reuse, which is a quality piece of work. I stick my head in there often, and I'm very impressed by it. The central pier dock that's being built right now in between the pier and the granary, that's historic, that's the way it used to be, and that's going to be a really good place to sit out and have dinner, you know, next to the beach that we're breaking ground on soon, that will be just a fantastic central focal point of the redevelopment effort right within Waypoint Park, which I sat in on the meetings, and it was fascinating to watch the comment be put into action, and it's going to be just a great little park to start out down there with, you know, all right next to the Bunker Sea Oil Cleanup that took place, all right on the Wacom Waterway, a completed $32 million, you know, preferred alternative remediation action. Never would have happened if the public didn't take control of that site, right across from Colony Wharf, where when the Wacom Waterway got cleaned up, new docks and bulkheads and, you know, pilings and uplands improvements to the working waterfront got implemented, right next to All-American Marine, right, facility that's there. I toured the Salish Explorer that got launched this weekend, and, you know, their job, everyone's talking job creation, just welders, they're up to about 70 now, state-of-the-art facility, continuation of maritime heritage. Not only that, the building, guess what, is part of the cap for the Central Avenue landfill there with monitoring and gas, you know, passive gas release, et cetera. It's just fantastic, and you can look across, oh, ITech Energy, more jobs, and what are all those iconic structures just sitting there, waiting to be put into use? Digestors, accumulator, you know, GoToWaypoint Park is art, the chipper, right? We demoed these buildings and saved these iconic structures, just like our current sub-area plan said we would. I looked down at RG Haley's and Cornwall Cleanup, those are in progress, beyond that. Boulevard Park interim action and Harris Avenue Shipyard being cleaned up. Anyway, as we reopen up the sub-area plan, I hope that people tomorrow go to this groundbreaking ceremony and really look and really get excited and hang on to that excitement, because, yeah, we changed the road grid, and we have to open up the sub-area plan and adjust for, you know, parks and view corridors and transportation access and whatnot. We can do that. We can make decisions about the marina. We have to be excited about it, though. We have to be positive, we have to be enthusiastic, and I'm looking forward for my elected officials to lead.
Okay. Time's up, Jeff. Thank you very much. Would anyone else, would anyone else like to come forward, speak your piece? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and go on with reports from our regular committee meetings this morning. The Justice Committee met, and April Barker is the chair.
Thank you. We had one item. It was just item for discussion. We were discussing trying to, I guess, drill down in and find our guiding principles for moving forward as a Justice Committee, but also to give administration some direction in regards to how we'd like to power on since the vote came in and the decision was made that the tax was not passed, the jail tax. So with that, we, again, had a lengthy discussion. You can go back and watch that this afternoon. We decided that we would break things into themes. We looked over a document that will be attached to, it looks like, the meeting minutes, and that included what we previously had guiding documents for the jail. So we went over those and decided which ones were still appropriate, held on to that. Everybody in the Justice Committee, as well as the mayor, were in agreement that it works better for all of us if we can find a way to move forward together, make sure that we're utilizing our resources and having robust programs. Let's see. We will come back to the next Justice Committee. I'll be working with staff and council members as well as reaching out to peers across the street to develop what those guiding principles will look like. We'll have probably a very robust discussion about that. If we don't get through it in our next meeting, we'll continue that, and then hopefully have something for council. Some of the statements that came up were certainly the one that we think we should all be working together and move forward. We also feeling that pre-trial should retain access and priority in the jail, as well as equal opportunity across jurisdictions. We talked about demographics and circumstances certainly being guiding principle, accessibility of facilities and services, whole-person and community justice, focused re-entry, victim harm reduction, budget, data and data system integration, accessibility and transparency, trauma-informed practice in care, transition to risk assessment tool, and away from that cash bail focus. So again, I'll be working on that, and I'm sure we'll have a very broad discussion at our next meeting, end of committee.
Okay. Thank you, April, for the report. The next committee which met was Public Works Public Safety Committee chaired by, normally by Terry Borneman, but I believe Jean, you chaired that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Michael. We had the one item, a review of public broadband initiatives. The Bellingham City Council requested that its staff conduct a research on public broadband networks developed by other municipalities. Staff will present the findings, a preliminary review of municipal broadband models, reviewing findings on the economic development impacts of broadband, and identify initial steps that would be necessary to evaluate whether Bellingham should expand its fiber capacity and increase public access to its network. The council will also hear from Christopher Mitchell of the Institute for Local Self-Reliance and Organization that Assists Municipalities in Developing Public Broadband Fiber Networks. Today, we heard from Mark Gardner, our legislative analyst, who went through the report and via Skype, and I think this is the first time we've ever had anybody Skype in the council chambers. Christopher Mitchell did give us a detailed report, and he answered our questions. It was a very good discussion, and this was information-only, but the committee did give a head nod to bring this back and ask for more discussion and for some action next time it comes up. The next item was the pedestrian awareness campaign update. The 2012 Pedestrian Master Plan established a policy framework for over $46 million in engineered pedestrian improvements. The plan also identifies program recommendations for enforcement and education. When effectively combined the three Es, education, enforcement, and engineering are proven measures in reducing the number of severity of traffic collision. Staff developed an education and enforcement campaign that was implemented at the beginning of August 2017, intended to increase responsible behaviors, educate users, and enforce rules of the road. Bellingham Police, Public Works, and Washington State Traffic Safety Commission staff will make a brief presentation to provide an update on the campaign. The previous council action was on 6/20/16. We adopted the 2012 Pedestrian Master Plan and the 2014 Bicycle Master Plan into the city's comprehensive plan. On 4/10/17, council briefing on pedestrian awareness campaign. The fiscal impact was approximately $35,000 from existing street traffic operations budgets will be reprioritized to pay for the campaign, $53,000 for distracted driver enforcement grant. We heard from Kim Brown, we heard from Carl Lanham, we heard from Amy Cloud, we heard from our traffic, the gentleman who does the traffic in the Bellingham Herald. We had a great report on this, and they're really doing a great job with outreach, and it was a very good report. Before I end, though, Ted, I've been asked to, once again, tell our snow people another fantastic job, the first snow of the season in Alabama. When I rolled by there at corridor six was passable, and they do a great job, and we just are simply amazed at how good they do, so just let them know. End of committee.
Thank you. Actually, the one item on public broadband initiatives was provide direction to staff, and I was wondering, Ted, apparently, we're doing an inventory of our existing broadband services, and that could be the basis for a discussion on what we have and whether we could open up those resources. When are you expecting to have that inventory finished? And then also brought up at the time was some supportive statements up here from myself and others on a "dig once" ordinance. I'd actually like to make a motion right now that we request the staff to look into the dig ordinances, or the idea of a "dig once" requirement to provide conduit when there's trenches are dug and new developments are put in, and then bring it back to the council for discussion. The motion is second to ask the staff to look into the idea of a "dig once" ordinance. April?
So I'm certainly, I'm very interested, and I want to learn more about that, but I think we got really great direction from our speaker today through Skype that we really need to set some goals, we need to understand what we have, we need to have clear direction for staff. And so for me, I prefer us understand exactly what it is we're looking for, and then to give direction to staff on which things to work on. So I'm in favor, I like, I certainly, from what I've heard, but I think sometimes we can kind of circle staff a little bit, and that was just what I really took away, and I wrote it down like three or four times, really make sure that we know what our objectives are. There's something in the air with all of us missing our words today, but it was a really long day. So anyhow, I am supportive, I don't want to seem like I'm not, however, I want to be, I want to be very pragmatic and give staff directions, because I want to know what this council wants in outcomes.
Pinky?
I totally understand what you're saying, April, and maybe because I've been kind of vested in this conversation for a while, that I'm really supportive of looking at "dig once" right away. I think we can look at our priorities and goals, but no matter what, we will probably need to implement that. So the sooner we start looking at what that means, what it costs, what it can take, I think it's coming, no matter what, so we're going to have to find a way to supply conduit, and I think that the sooner we look at that, the better.
I would echo that. The idea of a "dig once" ordinance helps anybody, ourselves included and private people, to lay fiber in the future, and that's a separate question from the bigger issue you're referring to, are we interested in public broadband or not? So I see them also as separate. Any further discussion on that motion?
Well, I'd like to hear from Ted, since it'd be his department.
Ted, would you be the department that brought forward whatever discussion that
Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. We would certainly be the department that would bring back a policy related to work in the right-of-way. We're happy to bring a work session back to talk about what we do now and what that might look like, and we could commit to do that after the first of the year. The broader discussion, and I appreciate council member Barker's comments, I think we do need to define what exactly the council would like us to talk about. There was a lot of issues that were discussed today. Mark had quite a few items in his memo. If you recall back to staff presentation earlier in the year, we had some information in there that was worth discussing, and perhaps we can talk more about what that might look like in terms of the topic and the work session. There was discussions today about understanding the need, discussions about understanding the inventory. I think that is key. We are working on that. I'll come back and provide information on when we might anticipate having that work complete, but I would appreciate some additional guidance on exactly what the council is looking for in terms of a work session beyond the "dig once" policy.
Let's just take care of the "dig once" issue first. Is everyone prepared to vote?
I still need a little bit more information. So, like, thanks for me, he suggested about an average of a $60,000 plan for every, to understand where we, for everyone to get fiber in the community and what that would look like, which I think would inform a "dig once" policy, because there may be areas where we're going to set policy, people are going to lay things. Maybe it will always be important to have it there, but I just think we're a little out of order, and I don't, I think we should revisit this. I'd just rather have a conversation of what were all the suggestions that we had? Do we feel like this is the right direction to go? I think a lot of us are going to be in agreement, but then what are the steps that we need to take so that we keep it in order? So if, I don't know as much about this, I know that you work in utility, you've been researching this a long time, I just, sometimes we get ourselves out of order, and it makes it a lot more convoluted for staff than it needs to be. So if you're inclined to move forward, I'd say go ahead. Otherwise, I'd like to have a conversation around all the suggestions that were had, and then we can make a decision on how we want to move forward. That would be my suggestion, but you're already halfway there.
I don't know why we can't have both. I mean, you can come forward with an overview and everything, and we can discuss where we want to go next, along with the "dig..."
Roxanne?
Yeah, just the way that I'm looking at it is, this is a report. This isn't a final decision that we're going to do it. This is research, correct?
I thought it was, what was your original motion? I thought it was to start the process of an ordinance.
Bring forward information on what a "dig once" ordinance would look like and what it would accomplish and how it's done elsewhere.
If purely informational-only, I will support it. If it's for final decision-making that we're going to do this, I will... If it's for final decision-making that we're going to do this, I will not. It's that simple.
So that's how the motion is understood, then?
Information?
Moving in that direction, but information, no decision at this point. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? That passes 6-0 with one excused absence. Before we go on, I would just say that on the broader discussion, I am not interested in keeping pace with internet infrastructure, I'm interested in setting the pace. And to me, that means looking at the role of that public broadband could serve. There are a lot of issues, I think I myself personally could define what my goals would be, but we as the council have not had a discussion, and we have not defined them. Okay. End of committee. We'll go on to the next committee. Thank you for your excellent and lengthy report. Finance and Personnel also met this afternoon. Roxanne Murphy is the chair.
Yeah, we just had one agenda item, it was the 2017 Third Financial, Third Quarter Financial Review. This was generally positive information from our financial statements, and I encourage people to view the afternoon committee meeting, cob.org/meetings. You can get the full report there and get the good news for yourself. This was for information only. End of committee.
Thank you, Roxanne. After that committee met, it was the Lake Waukun Reservoir and Natural Resources Committee. Dan Hamill chairs that committee.
Thank you. We had one item before us, this was a climate action update. 2005, city council committed to a climate protection plan, adopted it in 2007. It had goals of reducing emissions by 2012 of 64% on the municipal side, 7% on the community side. It exceeded those goals in 2015 on the municipal side, it was 68.3% reduction, on the community side it was a 10.4% reduction from 2000. The, on the municipal side, the climate action highlights that were used to get to those numbers were the green power purchases, also known as renewable energy credits, the LED streetlights, resource conservation management. On the community side, it was green power purchases, community energy challenge, and solar installations. On the municipal end of things, sewer utility and building and facilities account for 68% of municipal emissions. On the community side, it's, the makeup is transportation, and residential account for 60% of emissions. Going into the future, the 20 target, the 2020 target is a reduction of 70% from the 2000 numbers, and 20, on the municipal side, and 28% on the community side. And the strategies on the municipal side include energy efficiency and conservation, renewable energy, transportation, green building, waste reduction, and land use. And moving forward, some of the measures in the forecast include green direct power purchase, post-point resource recovery, that refers to the wastewater treatment facility, facility management, LED upgrades, and fleet management on the municipal side, and on the community side would be green power, community purchases, promoting hybrid and electric cars, residential energy efficiency, and industrial energy efficiency. And that was the report, and that's the end of committee report.
Thank you very much. Pinky?
I have a one request of the council, and I'm curious what you think, but I would like the climate action plan to be moved to committee of the whole instead of natural resources. I think it's a big enough thing that impacts all of us, so I'd just like to ask what the council feels about moving that to...
That's fine.
Objection?
No.
No, I think it was introduced in the right place, but you're right, it needs to kind of go on to the next level of discussion. Okay? And do we know when that would be coming, they're going to have the draft on, okay, our first meeting in December? Or is it the second one?
The second.
Okay. December 4th? Okay.
11.
11?
When I said 11.
Okay. We're going to get a short time here. Yeah, so the draft, they said, I think, was 90% finished, so it's the 10% they're working on. Okay, so when that comes forward, we'll make sure to schedule that in committee of the whole. Thank you, Pinky. The next committee was Community Economic Development. Pinky, that's you again.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a report out today from the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and this was done by Samyulans for Planning and Community Development. And what this is, is this is us being accountable to the government for our funds for low-income housing and for projects, et cetera. So we have different funding buckets that allow us to do multiple different assets. Our funds are received from the two that are considered under HUD, which is Housing and Urban Development, is our Community Development Block Grants, or CBBG, or Home Investment Partnership, which are home grants. The other grant, the other funds that we have are the Bellingham Housing Levy, AKA the Home Fund, which was approved in 2012, and that sunsets in 2019, and then, of course, our General Fund. So we had a report out today to see what all these funds are doing for us in regards to housing, some of the areas that this funding goes into, is rental housing development, preservation of housing, home buyer, communities, community facilities, and rental assistance and services. So we, this is a very detailed report. If anybody would like to look at the specifics of the information on our performance report, it is online under cob.org, Documents, Planning, and Community Development, and it is called the CAPER. So if you're looking for all the acronyms, they are all in this report. Unless there's anything, oh, and one thing we did ask from Planning and Development is if they could look at what gaps we have not been able to fund, and they informed us they are already working on that, and that report is coming to us soon. So, end of committee.
Thank you very much, Pinky. The final committee which met this afternoon was the Committee of the Whole, and there we had an item, which was a presentation of the elaborate Funding Sustainability Study. The Burke Consulting Group presented to us results of their Library Funding Sustainability Study. Earlier this year, the city of Bellingham and the Bellingham Public Library contracted with Burke Consulting to evaluate potential funding sources, including possible joining or annexation of the Waukun County Library System and the Bellingham Library System to possible levies, with the aim of potentially reducing the stress on the General Fund, and also providing a more stable foundation for the funding of the library. We had a presentation this afternoon. Several things that were discussed is that there really are no, under state law, special funding tools for libraries, other than the one that already exists in the county, which is a 50 cents per 1,000 property tax. The Waukun County Library System already levies that property tax. If the two districts or the library systems were to join, what would simply happen is the city would lose 50 cents in property tax, and that money would transfer to the property tax district, so that doesn't really change the funding available overall. Another possible funding mechanism is a general levy lift, which would increase the amount of money going to the General Fund. This could be done just for the benefit of the library, or it could be done to serve a number of purposes that the city could identify, if we felt we needed to make the case to the public for more revenues to meet our General Fund obligations. Currently, the library is funded to approximately $4.2 million per year, which is about 5% of our General Fund budget. There was some discussion of the idea of annexing to the Waukun County Library System, however, there didn't appear to be any particular support for that idea. Instead, there was interest in pursuing ways to increase funding with the Bellingham Library System to meet what were defined as Level of Service Levels Two and Three. They had sort of a zero level, a one, and two, and a three, is that accurate? And the motion this afternoon was that we ask staff to look at possible mechanisms to bring forward to increase library funding to meet their higher level of service, that is Level of Service Two or Three, and also, when that comes forward, it would be embedded in the larger context of other demands on the General Fund. I believe you don't need a motion tonight, that direction was already given? Is that correct? Okay, so that's the report on that. That was the only item in the Committee of the Whole, so we'll go on to approval of city council meeting minutes. There's one set of meeting minutes from November 6th.
Move approve.
Okay, is there any corrections or changes to the meeting minutes for November 6th? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Meeting minutes are approved 6-0 with one excused absence. Old and new business?
Okay, I'll go.
One.
We had a successful housing week, and I want to thank BTV for coming out to Eleanor Place Apartments and videotaping the keynote speakers, as well as our panels. It was, it's been wonderful to see it not only taped, but Dale and DJ, they had it up that night, and it had already gotten like 153 views, I mean, I think within the week. So if anybody's interested in learning more about that, they can go to the YouTube site for BTV. It'll also be airing on BTV, some of the opportunities of the keynotes. And just thank you to the city for putting our money in, but also thank you to all the different organizations, including the Department of Health, and Sustainable Connections, Opportunity Council, Unity Care, it just goes on and on. And it was really neat to see all of those forces together, talking about how we need to move forward, but we're going to have to have everybody, that economic piece, that development piece, that social service and humanitarian piece, so it was really quite nice. I appreciate it.
Anything else under old and new? Okay, great, then we will move on to report of executive session. The city council originally reported two executive session, one executive session item, that was dropped, but another one was added in its place. This afternoon, we discussed a potential property acquisition of real property. Staff provided information on this potential acquisition. It was for information and discussion only, city council took no action. We now move on to the mayor's report.
Yay.
We came up pretty fast, are you ready?
Actually, yes. It's a very efficient meeting.
We did all work this afternoon.
I don't have anyone for you to approve or be informed about, but I wanted to mention the Veterans Day that we had here on Saturday, and it was well-attended, as it always is, and there was a very inspirational speaker, and right now, I, his name is escaping me, but I, it was cry time. I mean, I looked out across the people that were in the audience, and what he was saying was so heartfelt, and it was the message that I think rang true with our community about us all being in this together, and I really appreciated that. I wanted to also, I forgot to say this when Rick was here, it's been a pleasure to work with the Library Board of Trustees, with April, Brian, on coming, on being able to analyze and what we might want to do with the library, and the openness to the Library Board of Trustees and the council on what our options might be is very encouraging, and I really appreciate that from you and from them. And as we talk about Housing Week, one of the things that I have been talking about since, well publicly, but I've talked about it privately a lot, since the Northwest Youth Services ribbon-cutting, has been this idea that housing is not just a Bellingham issue, housing is a county-wide issue, and I think that came out in some of the housing discussions, and also with some of the county staff, which I like these encouraging things that happen where people potentially have changed their mind about how they're going to view something, or how they're going to approach it. And the idea that we would collect money county-wide for a housing levy, which is what it was supposed to be to begin with, but again, Bellingham stood up and did it first. We were cutting-edge, Michael, for us.
We went first.
Yeah. And, you know, I mean, Dan is the one that knows, you know, the very most about this, and, but to hear someone from the county who's involved in this say, I think we need a county-wide levy, I think it gives us an opportunity to really pinpoint what the city wants to provide to put into that one-page plan that we're all going to work off of, and what the county can provide. So I'd like to see us really, again, open up our minds and look at, okay, here are all the services that are necessary, who can do what, and how should we both support the county-wide effort, and look at the people of Bellingham and thank them for what they've done, ask them to do a little more, but maybe not as much more as we might have asked them if we were the only ones. And I really do think this issue has gotten such a high profile, a year ago, I would have said, I don't know how this could maybe pass county-wide, but it's, the atmosphere, the information, the crisis is much different now than it was back then. So I think we have a lot to talk about after the first of the year, and I'm looking forward to it. And with that, I had about six other things on my list, but I'll stop so I don't make us too.
Okay. Consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? That passes 6-0 with one excused absence. We'll now go on to a final consideration of ordinances. If you don't mind, why don't we go ahead and take the property tax ordinance first? Let me first say that when we had this, when we first introduced this, we opened up a public hearing. I don't think we actually officially closed the public hearing, so I will officially close the written portion of the public hearing now, and would you go ahead and proceed with the ordinance?
Agenda Bill 21776, An Ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, relating to the levying of taxes and establishing the amount to be raised in 2018 on the assessed valuation of the property within the city.
Move third and final.
Second. We have a motion for us. Roll call, please.
Can I just, just really quick, I just want to make sure we're following process, since, because I don't, I don't want this to come back and bite, so it wasn't in the packet, it's okay that we can throw it in there now, and, because it's not going to hurt us to vote for it on the third or fourth.
Yeah, so was it, was there anything supplemental done?
There was no changes to the ordinance from the first reading.
Was there any notice that you were going to do a third and final reading on it?
Mm-hmm. Wasn't there?
It didn't make it into the packet.
It's not, I don't, I do not know, I believe it was not in our packet, I don't know when notification was sent out.
Is it, you know, the easiest thing to do would be to put it on for the next council meeting?
My understanding is that the county needs it like by the end of the month before our next meeting? I was prepared to sign it this evening and to get it to Kelly tomorrow.
No, I'm signing it today.
She's going to sign it tonight, too, if our lawyer allows us.
This is only for third and final, there's no changes. It just was an oversight on staff's part that it was not included. Third and finals are automatically included in the next Agenda Bill packet? That did not happen, so we're giving it to you tonight, but there's no changes. It was approved six or seven to zero, and we do need to get this over to the county before the end of the month, and unless you want a special meeting, I would...
No. Can you address April's questions?
I just want to make sure we're following process, so it was not in the packet.
We're not following process, but I would go ahead and do third and final this evening, it would be better once, if we noticed that, the packet come out and we had given some kind of supplemental notice, but if it needs to be done by the end of the month, I would vote third and final tonight.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
I do not know if we actually sent out supplemental notice.
I think we did.
Okay. But I would still proceed, if we need to come back and I'll consult with Peter, but I would proceed with the vote tonight.
Roxanne?
I'm going to try to do a process. I would like to make a motion that we would move to third and final on the 2018 Property Tax Ordinance. Each year, the city council establishes the property tax levy rates for the following year. A city ordinance reflecting this action is due to the county assessor by November 30th.
Second.
Well, we already had a motion on the table, third and final, should we?
But I'm just trying to read that into the record.
Thank you.
If there's no objection, we'll withdraw the original motion. Is there a second for Roxanne's motion?
Okay.
Second. Mr. Mariner, is this, we'll just go ahead and proceed with this, and you'll investigate?
Yes, I would proceed, given the time constraints, and I'll investigate. If there's an issue, you'll hear from me. Okay?
Okay.
We'll call Bob Mueller back east and see if we can...
Okay, proceed with the roll call.
April Barker?
Yes.
Dan Hamill?
Aye.
Jean Knutson?
Yes.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
And Terry Bornham, that's excused. Ordinance passes 6-0 with one excused.
Okay. And the next one?
Agenda Bill 21774, An Ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, adopting a transportation impact fee base rate and rate schedule for 2018.
Move third and final, oh, no.
Yeah, that's right.
Move third and final.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion before us for third and final. Roll call, please.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
April Barker?
Aye.
Dan Hamill?
Aye.
Jean Knutson?
Yes.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Ordinance passes 6-0 with Terry Bornham excused.
Okay, is there any further business for the Bellingham City Council?
Yes.
Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.